I told, I told.
At two o'clock.
I love that.
Not for executive sector. No, 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 no. More session? Yeah, yeah. Tonight, you can vote my call. Tonight, yeah. Have you got a copy? I think he's on broad. We have to go on some of them. No, not this, not.
I want to be on the report.
Let's just get started. Instead of between you. I don't get it. Yeah.
Hey.
And then we usually have some other, we also accrue the stuff that comes in July and August.
I was on the budget.
This is the first time I really paid attention to the budget.
Budget.
I'm at the first page.
I think they were trying to.
First page.
Budget.
I think I looked for like five minutes. They were wanting to.
Business fees are always the toughest because you know, the insurance to be able to get branches to see it. It's not just what we give for skin. We also get someone that pays us for skin for others. So it's the hardest part by the time we know it this year. We've already not been able to actually. Brenda said we're doing really good on the collection. But so Brenda said we're doing really good on the collection.
I talked to CJ.
I actually got here one time.
It just makes me nervous. I always hear very thin. He's always like, oh yeah, it's gonna be good. And I'm like, well, I won't know until like July or thirty. Or August. It just drives me crazy. It's like last year now hospitality is on the air. Because we pretty much know two weeks after the end of the year how hospitality will be pretty close. We're going to be getting more revenue at the end of this year. Potential. I, I think there's, it's not going to be as much as last year. I was taking a look at how he's giving papers. If you stay strong.
Tell Jane you mentioned, oh, without any problem.
I had to tell him to do whatever. Good job, yeah. Why did she get that?
What are they doing?
I got you, I got you.
I wish I could send me the note.
All right, let's rock and roll. Teresa. I'm sorry.
What is it that you want to add?
I'll take. I'll take.
Is, um. To make a couple.
As far as I know.
All right, let's go ahead.
Well, I'm worried about it now. But it's fine.
No, they said he got already, he got pretty doped up, I would think. He was done. That's gotta be painful. Let's, let's go ahead and start with some of this that Ms. DeVine and we'll rock and roll. All right, let's go ahead and get started, y'all. Madam City Manager, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Rickaman, Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Paul.
Present.
Mr. Vine. Here. Mr. Davis.
Here. Here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Mayor, if you want to open with an invitation for the work session.
Mr. McDowell, you mind?
Yes.
Attorney, thanks.
This is right here. Lord for this day and for all that you've done for us for the ability to move about and for the gracious presence of you in our lives. Sensitize us now as we enter into conversation and dialogue. We ask it and claim it in your name.
Mayor Benjamin, if we could adopt the agenda for today's work session and the rest of the evening, I know we'll adopt it again this evening.
Move the motion as the agenda is proposed.
Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I need that one more issue to this next session.
Yes, sir.
Additional receipt of legal advice related to pending threat and potential claim.
Yes, sir.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure how to, how to title it.
Okay. Is Jane here? And I believe we had another.
Actually, and actually, actually, that's, actually put it out before. It's actually just something that I said. It's not a lawsuit.
Okay.
Take advice related to matters covered by attorney general. Pending appeals.
Pending appeals.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Okay. And if we could also add Mayor Benjamin to item seven, Main Street Fox.
All right. Amendment accepted, Mr. DeWolff.
Yes.
Any questions, Court Colerole?
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. DeWolff.
Yes.
Mr. Vine.
Hi.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Benjamin.
We will open the, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Vine.
No. I just, y'all know, I, I love having interns. I wanted to introduce y'all my new intern for the summer, Imani Belton. Imani Kinnip. Imani just graduated from North Carolina A and T. And Steve and I probably have known her since she was in the womb. This is Jackie and David Belton's daughter. And so she'll be working with me this summer. She's interested in policy. So she'll be, I wanted her to hear the healthcare discussion and kind of help us, help me decipher through the information. So I just want to introduce her to everybody.
She said she'd never met, I've met you.
Thank you, welcome, Imani. Is it Imani?
Imani.
Imani, okay, great. We will open our work session with the financial report. Mr. Denny Olmer, our Deputy Finance Director is present. If you all have any questions for the April two thousand seventeen financial report.
I have already spoken to Mr. Olmer. He answered all the questions with technical expertise.
Wonderful to know.
I told Denny I had thirty questions for him. He, his response, I think his response was bring it on. But I, I don't have any questions.
Well, I need y'all to, you know, give him a little something because he knows he's got to stand his stand for Ms. Alonso at times. But he does a great job. Thank you, Denny.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, no.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Denny. So we are embarking upon some discussion items and, and council knows, I've shared an email with them about kind of my vision for how we're going to proceed in the off-season of budget after July one with some continued focus on budgetary matters leading into our new budget. But things that, you know, maybe a little creative approaches, some things that I know you all have put on the table as you really worked hard with this past budget season. Obviously, one of those items is healthcare. And we're going to embark upon several workshop, work session discussions regarding healthcare to get us where we need to be by the fall. And we've got a pretty tight timeline that we want to follow as we anticipate putting out our RFP for healthcare services and dealing with retirement issues and the like. So we're starting that today. We're really excited to have Mr. Kevin Bryant, the Resident Manager Director of the South Carolina Operations for Aon Risk Services South Inc. They will be our consultant to help guide the staff and I as we make recommendations to you. It's really important today for you all to be best candid with me and with Kevin and his team about things that you want to see as far as data and comparisons and all of those things. Because again, we're, we're going to be on a pretty tight schedule to get some information back to you. So with that, we will have Kevin, I think, open up or Pam? I'm not sure which one.
Good afternoon. Teresa, Ms. Wilson really said it all because we, we are here to do some deep healthcare discussion. What we have been, what we've done so far is that we have issued the RFP and Aon was chosen to help be our, our healthcare consultant and to provide us with guidance on combining what you all would like to see along with what we already have and, and help us move forward in the best direction. And so what we are hoping for them to do today is give you kind of an overview of their team, their timelines, their approach to this, this, um, this project, and then kind of give you some idea about how we're going to move forward. They will also be open to the discussion of what you all are really interested in seeing. So they can frame a lot of their work with, with what you all, what your desires are. So we wanted to have this opportunity for you all to, and hopefully at the end, you'll give us your feedback and give us specific things that you would like for them to do. They've already begun the work. They've already pulled some data. They've already started. But we certainly want to make sure that we are focused and in the direction that you all really want us to go forward in. So Kevin's going to give you an overview of kind of Aon and what they do and the clients they've worked with. And some of his other staff are going to give you some information about trends and approaches. And then we'll, we'll, we'll finish that hopefully with your thoughts on exactly what direction you want to go in. So we'll want to hear from each of you in order to guide the next steps forward. So without further ado, I will let Kevin come up here and start us off.
This is my first time here, so shall I stand here? Is that good? That's appropriate. First of all.
And so Kevin, we're streaming live and this is recorded. So that's why it's always important for you all to be at the mic.
Well, thank you very much. This is a wonderful opportunity on behalf of Aon. I would like to say thank you first to Mayor Benjamin, to the council, Madam City Manager, and Madam Benjamin and her team. Thank you for this opportunity. Aon is very excited to work with the city of Columbia. Just a little bit of history. Aon is the global, is a global professional services firm. We are the world's largest insurance brokerage firm. We employ fifty thousand employees globally in a hundred and twenty countries, republically traded. We have about thirty billion dollars in market capitalization. And in two thousand and sixteen, we generated over nine billion dollars worth of revenue in the United States. Aon has a deep footprint on the healthcare side, which is where the we actually consulting with you. We control about a hundred and twenty-five billion dollars of, of market capital on behalf of our clients in the United States, which means that we control about thirty percent of the marketplace. We're with over eleven hundred public entities throughout the United States. We have a large footprint here in the Carolinas. We also work with the city of Charleston. We've had over a decade-long relationship with them. Work with the city of Columbia, Mecklenburg County, and we're also doing work for the city of Atlanta as well. We have assembled a, a quality team for you of subject matter experts in several different areas, healthcare strategy and retirement planning and financial consulting. The team that will be with me and working on your behalf are seated here today. And they will follow me to talk about strategically what they're going to be doing to help you control healthcare costs and to move the city forward. And then we will then turn the conversation to the retirement side as well. But we are very happy to be here. But we are very happy to be here today. We thank you for this opportunity. We will make every effort to meet your expectations. And we have, our only fiduciary responsibility is to serve the city. So with that being said, I would like to introduce the health and benefits account leader, Cindy McCartney. And Cindy's going to talk about strategy, vendor management, timelines, and everything that goes into building a quality healthcare program. Thank you for this opportunity. Does anyone have any questions of me?
Ms. Parkerwell?
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, city of Columbia and city council. It's a pleasure to be here and to work with you. My name is Cindy McCartney, and I've been in the benefits industry for over thirty years, spanning several states, Colorado, Florida, and now South Carolina. And it is a pleasure to work with Aon and being representing them here to you, helping you with your program and your employee benefit program. So one of the things that, the role that I have on this particular project is as client lead. It is my job to set strategic direction for any of the projects that we do in behalf of our clients. And then also to manage the team. I'm going to mention some of the team members who may or may not speak. But we have Christopher Payne. Chris is one of our H and B consultants. Chris will be involved in the project in ongoing service. We also have Malik Gibson, and Malik Gibson is a health and benefits analyst, and he'll be working with us as well. A few minutes you'll hear from Scott Riley. Scott Riley is from our financial team. And so then later, as we speak a little bit more about the financial or the retirement side, Eric Atwater is behind you here. So in this project, Aon was selected during an RFP that was recently conducted to be the conduit to actually perform an RFP on behalf of the city to go out to vendors for administration and also to market the stop-loss and to bring back not only information but direction and insight as to what the right direction might be for the city to pursue going forward. Now, that means it could be one of four carriers. And carriers as administrators or third-party administrators also known as. Talking about Blue Cross, Cigna, United Healthcare, and also Aetna. Now, of those carriers, we will be doing an in-depth review with a very extensive, what we call an RFP document that includes all of the claim information specific to these employees within your group. And then also bring back that information back to the city so that you can make that definitely the decision that's going to fit you and also help you move forward over the course of time. As far as trends, we work, as Kevin mentioned, with the city of Charleston. We've worked with Richland County in the past. Those are two entities that are dealing with very similar issues that you have here. And that's attracting and keeping talent and helping to control costs. So as experts in this area, we're going to bring some strategic recommendations. We're going to give you some options to consider. But most importantly, we want to hear from you. We want to hear what some of the thoughts and some of the ideas might be from your perspective as to what your challenges are. And also some of the ideas so that we can actually address, you know, honestly, to be transparent and make it simple, what works and what doesn't work. So that certainly is our goal. And let me talk a little bit about the timeline. The timeline, in order to get this accomplished for a potential change for January first, 2018, we would need to start next week with our work. And we have been hired to manage, collect, and then represent and produce a document of this representation of your options back to the city. So we will be managing that entire process, coming back in July to speak with you to address some of your specific concerns. And then also coming back at the end of July, early August, to work with the HR team. And then also to assist the HR team in making the presentation of some final recommendations. So it's very important that we get very clear and concise direction from the council this morning so that we can accomplish that in a fairly short timeframe.
And what's the thought, what was that, final recommendations by when?
We're really looking, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. What we'd like to do is meet with the HR team right at the end of July. We're really talking like July twenty-eighth, and it's the last week of July, so that we can have some finalist determination the first week of August and then also be prepared to come back to the mid-August meeting with the final recommendation as to what the best solution would be for you. And that's fairly tight also. It's going to be difficult to deviate from that simply because in order, should a new vendor be chosen to get everything in place for your open enrollment and your January first, you know, new contract year or plan year, we need to give the carrier or this new vendor that opportunity to get everything in place so it's up and running on time. Okay?
Still have open enrollment in October?
Yes. Now, there are actually, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If we choose a new vendor, then they would be the people enrolling in October for a January one start?
That is correct.
What if we decide to go with the state health plan? How would that work?
Well, there will be similar deadlines. State health plan will be included in our recommendations. So we're going to contact on behalf of the city, the state health plan, so that we can include their information as far as whether they are a viable option for you. And then they will also tell us what the enrollment requirements would be. Now, the other thing too is that keep in mind, there are two separate pieces to this. There is the vendor RFP, and there is work that we want to do as far as consulting is concerned on your actual plan design and other options. So that is something that is determined. It's going to be supported by actuarial information from Aon, but it's going to be determined and driven by the city. And then the results are something that the vendors would carry out. So we have a vendor RFP for capabilities. We have stop-loss with insurance carriers, which may or may not be the administrator. And then we also have the plan design work. So there are really three components to this project. Any other questions? Okay, Scott, come up and talk about the financial part?
Good afternoon. I'm Scott Riley. I've been with Aon for twenty years. I work in our Riley, North Carolina office. And happy to be here with the team in Greenville, based out of Greenville, and here with the city today. My role in the team will be to oversee the financial calculations and review of all the different data that comes in. One of the things we'll be doing is we're in the process now of collecting data on the city's plan. And we will be reviewing that and obviously sharing that with the market that Cindy just mentioned. As we go to, as we submit the RFP, there are different considerations from the carriers, such as pharmacy terms, medical discounts, and fees and so forth. We'll be evaluating that and as we evaluate all the RFP responses, we will be sharing that with the city here for your consideration. And in regards to medical trends and pharmacy trends we're seeing in the market today, we participate in surveys. We get information from the federal government, other state governments, the data warehouses we participate with. And trend data we're seeing is medical trend in the six to seven percent range a year. Pharmacy trends have been increasing to the eleven, twelve percent range a year. If you combine those two, you know, we're looking at eight to nine percent overall medical and pharmacy trend in a given year. And so without doing anything, we're expecting cost increases, you know, in that, at least trend is, costs are increasing about that in the market. Except we're in the process of doing evaluation of the city-state at this point. So not ready to speak to what the cost increases for the city are or cost changes for the city at this point. That will be part of what I'll be involved in evaluating as we move forward. Any questions? Yes?
And I guess in addition to trends, for the city's plan, is part of that also maybe an evaluation of our claims and kind of the biggest areas that we see?
Yeah, that would be the predominant driver of what your costs are or what the claims have been for the city's employees and their covered dependents. So we will be doing a thorough analysis of that. And then comparing that with, you know, what we expect that to be. You know, currently your plans with Blue Cross today. And as we evaluate the other carriers, what we, what those costs we think they would be if you were to look at Aetna, United Healthcare, Cigna for the city's consideration.
It's important. Of course, as you conduct your analysis and help us compare apples to apples, it's important that you guys are stepping in the place of Towers Watson. It's important, in the interest of transparency, their compensation is not tied to any other compensation from a perspective business or you're stepping in the market.
Absolutely. We work for you.
They're compensated directly by us for your work that you do.
Correct. We have no interest, I mean, we have no bias as far as who works with the city going forward. We are an independent evaluator and we're here to-
Just make sure you guys know that too, so.
Yes.
Some comfort in that space.
Right. Any additional questions?
Ms. Parkerwell, I'd be interested in some preliminary analyses.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
So, good afternoon. I like to say they save the best for last. My name is Eric Atwater. I'm an actuary, and I'm actually the national public sector leader for actuarial practice for all of Aon Retirement Investments. I'll be leading the retired medical piece, or OPEB as it's affectionately known, or GASB. I'll use all three of those synonymously. So first, I'll just talk a little bit about just the timeline that will be given. Your fiscal year ends six-thirty, and so the first thing that we have to do kind of on the GASB side is to help you complete those financial statements. So we'll be taking care of that. Simultaneously, we'll be working with you on a long-term strategy. You've already taken steps, just like in 2012 and 2014, to kind of control and minimize the OPEB liability. What I'll be doing is looking at further options that you could potentially take. Going all the way to one extreme, and I'm not suggesting this, of actually, you know, closing or shutting down the plan and then looking at other options. We're going to look at everything on the table and not necessarily recommend things to you, but look at all the pros and cons. Because as you know, this is kind of like a balloon. You squeeze one area, another, it pops out. So that's what we'll be looking at. I plan to kind of bring to you what I'll call kind of, I call it a levers matrix. So basically, there's a lot of options you can do with retired medical, right? So the question is, you know, if I do option A, B, and C, what do I get? So what we'll do first is, we'll say, well, what does option A worth? What does option B worth? Show you those individually and then package them together for you. Come to probably two or three options for you and then have some discussions around it. We do plan, when Cindy comes out with kind of some preliminary reports in early August, late July timeframe, to kind of have at least that levers matrix ready for you to kind of start the discussion around, you know, long-term, what do you want to do with retired medical? Another piece of retired medical, I've talked about the plan design. The other piece is actually funding the plan. With the new GASB standards, I would say that probably the last year I've had more conversations around funding OPEB than I've had in prior eighteen years of my career. You know, ten years ago, this didn't even exist in governments. Ten years ago, you had to put it on your books, and now GASB's taken another step further. So we've been having plenty of conversations around funding. And around the funding, I'll say that's kind of two parts. One of it is actually establishing a long-term trust to put the money in so that you can invest long-term. You know, and there's some savings to that. And the other piece is, at some extent, studying this, do you actually go out and borrow the money to fund? And I'll call that borrow to fund. And I'm not saying you should do any of those, but we would evaluate all those options.
Don't read any buying language or respond to it as you say certain things, okay?
Okay.
You had Mr. DeVal shaking his head. He said yes one and no the other. Just keep one going.
So we plan to look at all those options, you know, and bring to you the pros and cons. But because, you know, none of those are fantasy. That's really all that I have. I mean, trying to be brief. Are there any questions for me?
And part of that would also be maybe what other similarly situated governments are doing to decrease their liability.
Yes. Yeah, we'll bring back a lot of, you know, data we're seeing across the country. I would just say preliminary, looking at your plan, that as you've gone to this kind of defined dollar plan, you're probably on, ahead of that curve.
Right, we're in the right direction.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my sense of things, too, speaking to our peers.
But I'll bring, you know, what we're seeing across the country. And, you know, I don't want to get into too much detail, but we'll definitely bring that to you, yes. Any other question?
We got some more focus.
All right, thank you.
Is that the entirety of the presentation? So we start discussion now? What's next?
We, I think, what-
Eric's trying to figure, if he's standing there. If you're the GASB guy, you might, you might-
I don't know who.
If you're forty-five, if you're GASB forty-five-
Forty-five and seventy-five and everything else, you might be the one to stand.
Well, maybe Pam needs to come up. I think, I think that Kevin and his team, you know, they are all scribes on the particular areas that they're covering as they've described it to you. But again, what's so important for them today is to get your feedback, kind of your thought process. And, you know, we've talked to them. I kind of know where a lot of, we've shared-
We shared our thoughts, okay.
We have shared your thoughts as to, you know, wanting to build a program for our employees, retain the best of the brightest, but understand that we are in a different place.
Yeah.
And we know that this council has given us the direction to give you some solid feedback on how we manage costs going forward. But I know I may not have gotten as specific from each one of you. I know Mayor Benjamin shared some thoughts, Mr. DeVal has, and we've shared those things with Kevin and the team. But if any of you have anything additionally that would really give them the kind of candid information as they're coming back in July, because it's going to move pretty quickly at that point as far as putting together at least a piece for the vendor RFP. The plan design options, I guess, the best way to say that is what's your appetite for certain things that we've talked about before?
And I know Daniel had some stuff. Pam, are you going to arrange for him to have an opportunity to share?
Absolutely. Because we know that he's very interested in the subject. So we are going to arrange for him to have the time to be spent to share with us his thoughts about some. Because one of the things we want you all to know is that they're going to explore all types of options. You know, just not, because you all know that it's more complex than just who the TPA is. There are a lot of other factors involved. So they'll do that portion, but they also look at some of the other things that may impact our cost. And so we want to be able to make sure that they understand what your issues, concerns, your appetite, like Ms. Wilson said, or, you know, really big plan design changes or going to the state health plan. I know that Councilman DeVal's mentioned that several times. And they are prepared to do an analysis to look at all of those things. So we did want to give you the opportunity to be able to be real candid and just, you know, throw out all the things that you're interested in us looking at because we want to make sure we're focused and we get the end product that's going to meet your needs and going to lead us strategically into the next chapter of this, of this management.
Let me ask you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Sam.
This is broad. I know you've, it's all covered that in terms of what we could expect. I think every day I hear, you know, you hear about the providers that are pulling out of certain areas, certain parts of the country. So what I'm getting is that you're going to be, your approach would be sort of anticipatory. You're going to basically anticipate the impact on where we are now. But I'm assuming you'll be moving and at the same time keeping your eyes on how the market and providers are making those kinds of changes, which will also be impacted by, I guess, mandates coming out of Washington. I would be interested in the final approach, final design, really, really looking after and making it as less traumatic as possible on the folks who we tend to really want to protect in our system. Then our high-salaried folks and their individual and family situations means a lot in terms of whether they stay here, whether they go, and if we cheat them. Means a lot in terms of whether they stay here, whether they go, and if we cheat them. I think, I'd like to see the final product being just as attractive to them as those folks that we want to bring in, more talented folks. I, I'm a firm believer that if, if people have proven their loyalties to a system, they've given, then, uh, we have an obligation to them. Not a free ride, but, but, you know, I think you have to respect the fact that the system is what it is. We, we are as sharp and as mean and as mean as we are because of the people that, that, uh, that make the system work every day. I'm very concerned about that. And I, I think it's gonna come out anyway, but, um, the, uh, the concerns of retired folks in the system, how they, how that will play, the final product plays for them, those that are in, those that are out, the length of time they've been out, and, you know, the same, I mean, discussions we've had over the years, what are our obligations? But I think we'll be, probably be standing on a, a different type of dirt, because one of the questions in the past was whether things were committed, um, implied, or, or promised. And so, I think we have to kind of be aware that, that that may be a point of discussion. Yeah.
So they certainly have all of our demographic information. They know, you know, they'll know, you know, how many employees we have, at what age groups, how much service they've had with the city, um, what, what their incomes, and they'll be able to kind of do some analysis of if we move from one carrier to another carrier, or go to whichever choices we choose, how that'll impact the population, and kind of give us a sense for that when, as we move forward in different directions. And they'll be looking at our retiree population and how any changes will impact them as well.
Ms. Duvall, then Mr. McDowell.
Well, I'd just share, I guess, some of my thoughts on appetite. And I can just imagine what my colleague, Mr. Duvall, might have thrown out there. But I guess I would say as far as, and, and I think the city manager mentioned it correctly when she said, I think it's balancing a lot of different things, but retaining and, and being able to recruit the best and brightest, um, but also, you know, keeping our costs down. Um, and so quite frankly, I know that it's been thrown out there a couple of times about, you know, not covering anybody other than the employee. And, you know, I would just say for a government, and I would love to hear y'all's impact on what other, others are doing, but, you know, for a government, you know, we're, we're limited to a certain extent on salaries. And, you know, someone might can make more in the private sector, um, and so to us, you know, we compete with the private sector on, on some things, and they might can make more in the private sector, but typically they're not getting, um, the benefits package that we're able to provide. And I know we've talked about being able to clearly articulate the benefits that we really cover, so the employees know that although you might be making this amount, the, the value of what you're getting as far as healthcare is, is here, um, and, and the way healthcare is going in this country, I think that's a huge benefit. And I would hate to see us, um, for the mere fact to control costs or to cut costs to, uh, to make changes that really make it, um, impossible for younger employees, particularly ones with families, to, to really be here. So, you know, that would be a huge concern that I have. Another would be is, I think that in the past, we've been, um, very lenient in trying to, um, not dictate to employees way of life in, in regards to smoking, or going to the doctor on a regular basis, or, um, eating well. And I think that if you look at our claims and, and some of the things that we have, I, I think you can, you can directly relate some of those issues with lifestyle choices.
Those days are over, is what you're saying, right? Those days are over.
Yeah, I, I think that we've got to, you know, really, um, look at drawing a harder line there. And, and so, you know, I would have an appetite for that, you know, making, making some, some mandates as opposed to, you know, just kind suggestions on, on how you do things, or at least making sure that our plan recognizes, um, the people who are making wise healthcare choices and how, wise lifestyle choices versus people who may not be. Um, so those are kind of the two areas that I'm really interested in kind of hearing some impact on in our design.
And they'll definitely be able to share with us some of the trends and some of the things that are going on, and some of their other clients as far as plan design and mandates and some, some stronger things, if, if that's something we have an appetite for. So I'm glad to hear that, that's some of the things you want us to look at.
Yeah, for me, it's gotta be some clarity in terms of explaining and an explanation of the options that are out there. Strong support, I think, has to be, uh, sitting around this table. For me, it has to be very, very clear that the options, we've got the demographics and we've got all of the instruments that you're gonna use to sort of put all of this together. But it's gotta be, it's gotta be crystal clear in terms of explaining, explaining that, so that the options, so that the options, whether it's in the retire, retired status, and of course, that concerns me a lot because I'm retired. And, uh, and Howard is on his way out. I'm sorry. But it's, it's, it's gotta, it's, it's gotta be clear, and the explanations have got to be crystal clear, so that when, when asked, we can sort of buy into that.
So ju- just to be crystal clear, you mean the options that we explain to our employees, or that you all have to, to give us some guidance?
It's almost a combination of both.
Okay.
Does that make any sense? A combination of both.
We gotta understand it so we can explain.
Yeah, you have to be right.
Well, de- definitely, we will definitely try to provide you with the, the information so you all are prepared to respond to your constituents or anyone who asks you about, you know, why we went in a direction and what direction we choose to go in.
The things I'm looking at, number one, I want a, I want a fair comparison with the state health plan to include third-party administrators and administrative costs that we might, uh, not have if we contracted with the state to provide a health plan. Uh, I want the comparison of the major cities in South Carolina, design a plan and retirement, uh, benefits compared to the city of Columbia. And since you've got Mecklenburg, Atlanta, and I've forgotten...
Charleston, City of Charleston.
Well, Charleston, I heard.
Yes.
Charleston, uh, but Charleston, Greenville, Rock Hill, Florence, Myrtle Beach, all of the big ones in South Carolina. I'd like to show the council what they provide, because, and we are in competition with local cities, and it might be, uh, educational to look at Lexington County, City of Lexington, City of Casey. If we're losing our offices to those agencies, we might need to look at what they're...
All right, me, right? I'll try to speak for Mr. Rickman as well. The, um, we had a few more, uh, about our fellows coming to the room, uh, more college students. So what we're talking about here today, we're not talking about the pensions that, that, uh, most government employees rely on. We're talking about the way we provide our healthcare, uh, benefits to employees and make sure we have a plan that's competitive to attract and retain, uh, the best talent, particularly a lot of, uh, young, uh, family folks like Ms. Duvall mentioned earlier. But how we pay for folks today, also how we meet our long-term obligations, uh, these, these non-pension, or, or OPEB's other post-employment benefits. When people, uh, leave us, how do we maintain that obligation of a long-term, uh, as a long-term liability? And that's where a smart actuary is, like this guy, come in and help us, and help us determine, you know, exactly, uh, I guess every couple of years, what, what our, our long-term unaccrued actuarial liability is. And, and, and once we determine what that number is, which I guess is somewhere around a hundred and thirty million dollars now, before we went to a, it's called defined dollar benefit, uh, a few years ago, that number was almost two times that. And we were able to kind of get arms around, uh, these, uh, long-term costs. That long-term cost is important because every, based on what that long-term cost is, you have to set aside a, a certain amount of money each year to try and meet that long-term obligation. It's called an annual required contribution. And, and that's important, and I dare say even more important to a city like Columbia versus other cities that may be similar to us in size, or, uh, is that this city is a very different DNA. Over half of our real estate's now under tax rules. We're a capital city. We're a government city. I guess maybe sixty-eight percent or so of our general fund comes from property tax revenue. You don't have that tax base of a city our size. It really, uh, you, you take that, you combine that with our ongoing, uh, medical costs, uh, that, that we, that Ms. Duvall also spoke to, and, and, and now we may have been a bit hesitant a few years ago to start pushing our employees a little bit harder to, 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 to stop smoking and, and really, uh, commit to some wellness plans. We're watching our healthcare costs. I mean, it's not unique to us, but, but I, I care mostly about, about our city. Watching those costs balloon, I mean significantly, uh, every single year. And while we're watching trends go up and everything else, we, we, we're watching, of course, good trends in hospitality tax revenue, general fund revenue. And all, all these things happening, it's not coming close to keeping up with our healthcare costs. And, and so we're gonna have to find some way, through the way we design, uh, our healthcare plan, to, to begin to arrest those costs in, in some way, and then using some of the tools and, and ideas that, uh, Aon's gonna bring to the table, determine how we're gonna deal with these, with these long-term, uh, liabilities in a way that's fair to our employees, that's attractive to prospective employees. But also, um, I, I dare say, you know, there's a step above that, that's also fair to our taxpayers. You know, we, we've gotta still make sure that we have the resources to put, uh, a quality, uh, force of, of, of peacemakers on the street and, and fire service and, and parks and all the things, uh, that, uh, that matter. So, those are just for the education of our, of our, of our, our students here. And I've shared almost, um, all of my ideas with, with, with the city manager and Ms. Benjamin and Mr. Palin and others more than they, and Ms. Kaufman more than they probably care, uh, to, uh, have. But, but I, I do believe that we're gonna have to, I do know that we're ahead of the curve compared to many of our peers. Not all of our peers, but many of our peers, uh, just to recognition, I think, I want to say four, five, six years ago, when we went to DDB, we dropped, the number's two hundred and thirty-eight million, uh, down to about a hundred and ten million is what we dropped our long-term actuarial liability down to. We got about fifty, sixty million in the bank? About fifty million in the bank, not in trust, uh, but it looks good on our balance sheets. Mr. Duvall wants to put it on trust. I'm not gonna convince, we, we're gonna get the bank for our buck out of that. But I do want, I do want, um, to spend a lot of time looking at all of the different options. So if, if we look at placing some of it in trusts, you know, we, years ago, uh, put the idea on the table of, of, uh, and I hate to say buying out, because I think it's clear that while we, while some may argue we have a moral obligation, only we have an illegal obligation to, to, uh, to have any plan. But if we determine that that is, uh, gonna be our long-term obligation, I would be interested in, in, in finding some of those very attractive, uh, uh, employees or retirees that we could systematically pull out of our system. If we recognize that the long-term, uh, obligation to this, um, uh, family, uh, of, of three or four, might add up to two or three hundred thousand dollars. I'm curious as to how attractive or what tools, uh, might be available to us to, to, uh, to make fifty or seventy-five thousand dollars available to pull them out of the system. Now, mind you, if you're talking about twenty-two, twenty-three hundred employees, how many retirees are we talking about? Seven hundred?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred or so? I mean, um, I'm not sure how much stretch you'd get out of that fifty million dollar corpus. But, uh, but I think as, as creative as we can be, uh, put on the table, the, the bonding idea, I know those, that, um, that was probably pretty more popular in the, in the Midwest, uh, with, with pension obligation bonds, uh, in, in the past. I'm not sure if, if, um, if it was successful because of, or not because of the, the tool itself, or because it didn't also come with the fiscal discipline to actually stop the bleeding as well. And that, I think that's, that's probably more, uh, of the challenge. If in fact you're going to, uh, borrow somebody with interest rates still being historically low and put those funds, uh, in trust, then you also got to stop the bleeding on the other side and make, and make sure that you're not, you know, adding in. So what type of, I, I still think, I mean, obviously, uh, things change every year. We gotta, we gotta find some date certain that new employees will go into a, a different model, whatever that looks like. I don't know what that looks like, but you guys have to give us some ideas of something that, that our staff knows, the sensitivities of all the different policymakers here, so they can kind of know that they're gonna bring us back something that we can all live with. But I, I do really think that the, uh, pension obligation bonds are something we should aggressively pursue. If they work, they work. If they don't, they don't. But at least I think you'll find the disposition of counsel to, to also stem the, the, uh, the bleeding that some of our more Midwestern counterparts that also had collective bargaining and unions and others that they had to deal with, we're not willing to do. We don't have that, that, that challenge here. I just think we're looking at a, um, a completely different reality than where American cities and states and political subdivisions were ten, fifteen, certainly thirty or forty years ago. Seismic shifts in benefits landscape and the way in which so many of our colleagues are still doing business is just wholly unsustainable. And, um, I think the quicker we recognize that, the quicker we realize, uh, um, multiple seven-year, seven-figure benefits to our, to our general fund to, to, to put back into, uh, you know, some critical needs. And, uh, and I'm eager, uh, to get this conversation started. And, um, don't be, uh, surprised if you start getting weird emails in the middle of the night from our staff, because I've been emailing them in the middle of the night, uh, with, uh, with another new idea. All right, good job, good job. Mr. Duvall?
Mayor, uh, I appreciate your comments. One, one thing you said, though, was that, uh, we need to phase this in with new hires. I think if you look back at the cities in South Carolina that did this ten years ago, two thousand and seven, they did it in tiers. Fifteen years of service, ten years of service, five years of service, and you, and you hire. If you just do it with new hires, you're gonna have a longer tail.
Sure, absolutely. A very long tail.
To stop the bleeding.
Very, very long tail.
So the tier system is more economical in terms of overall cost?
That's right.
Budget-wise?
Right.
And sustainability?
That's right. It's just, um...
One, that's one option.
I just have to take your, your, your two opening comments, you know, together. If you think there's some long-term obligation to existing employees and their retirees, how do you, how do you bridge those two, those two worlds?
The, the argument there is that there is a, a bigger obligation to the people that are closer to retirement. So you would start off with the people that are thirty years, oh, twenty-five to thirty years, maybe not do any changes. Then they would be able to, to go out.
Big obligation means financial obligation? Big obligation means more obligation?
You, you would, you would maintain almost the current status for those that are closer to the retirement. And then you get down to the fifteen to twenty years, you'd have a different tier. You'd, you'd phase it in. These people know what that is. And that's the way most of the cities in South Carolina that did this, when they should have been it.
But we're looking at, but we're looking at annual required contribution this year, ten?
Ten million dollars.
Ten, ten million, that's not including pay go? Is that right? That doesn't, okay, so ten million, you know, so if we, if we, and this is, you know, you, you guys also learn, my staff has learned not to trust my back-of-the-envelope numbers. But, uh, at least they'll take them at, but you know, um, we're, we're bonding, what, what, we're, we're doing about, how much we're doing this year, Joe, in, in, uh, in water sewer bonds, eighty in, in cash? What are we doing? I guess, I, I see Brett right behind you, too. I guess I could ask him that. How much, how much are we doing this year? Hundred and twenty total, um, out the door in water sewer? How, what's, and what's the mix?
Total's a hundred and twenty for bonding, I believe.
I got enough people in this room. Somebody's gonna know the numbers. Uh, so, about eight, about eighty million and... A hundred and... A hundred and eight, and, and what's, and what's the, uh, what's, what's, what'd we get on that on the last time?
About three and a half percent.
About three and a half? So, so what, so what's that? What's our, what's our payment on that? Then you got your, your trustee amortization calculated in your, in your, in your, in your, in your pocket. That's over thir- Um, that's over thirty years? So, about ninety, about ninety thousand per million? Or just less than that, actually, uh, at three and a half. I love when all the act share, all, all the act shares and numbers, people grab their calculators, like, almost, almost by design, seventy? So, so even let, so sev, so seventy thousand? Not counting the issuance costs, but...
Nine point one million, one hundred and eight, hundred and eight million?
Yeah. So, nine point eight million. So, I mean, so, so we're getting close to a point where, I mean, obviously, close to a point where, uh, the annual required contribution comes, comes, it's coming close to, we would cost to service that debt. And obviously, you're taking something that, that we might, that some of us may consider a moral obligation and, and making it a legal obligation, uh, if, if you go in, in that route. But it does also give you level debt service that, that you can, uh, at least anticipate for a period of time.
But you're paying a debt on uncontrollable expense. How, how you gonna know what the medical expenses are and the retirement expenses are? They're growing at eight percent a year now. It's crazy to try to borrow debt.
Well, that, that, the other side is you gotta, you gotta close the speaking. I mean, I think, I think if, you think you gotta get into a tight plan.
We gotta close the speaking.
Oh, yeah. You gotta get into a tight plan, a tight plan. If we're, if we're gonna take on the long-term, uh, liability, um, as, as, I haven't heard anything, uh, from any of us that, that we, we'd like to cut the long-term liability, but we take on the long-term, the responsibility for long-term healthcare benefits, we gotta find a way to, to come with a plan, plan design that, that we can all live with, that we think is fair to our employees, that we think is attractive to prospective employees, and, and say, this, this is gonna be the plan. And obviously, you guys are gonna come back to us every, every, every two years, every, uh, what are we required to do, guys, forty-five and seventy-five, every, every couple of years?
Every year.
Every year? Okay. But we, we, we look at this every, at least every year, every, every couple of years? Um, the, the...
But we are totally out of control on the healthcare costs. We don't have any control. We can tell we want an eight-inch sewage line, but we can't tell them we want a hundred-thousand-dollar heart transplant.
But, but, no, I agree on that. But we're still paying those anyway. I mean, those, those are still gonna be paid. We gotta, we gotta figure out how we're gonna make our employees, uh, act more healthy. I'm talking about a long-term, uh, OPEB liability, so I'm separating the part. How, how is it, if in fact, we are seeing eight percent, uh, growth there, uh, every single year? Um, if we can get some type of level debt service, now the question is whether or not we can actually appropriately forecast that, that we're gonna be able to control those, those OPEBs, you know, that you can actually, or it's a whole nother, a whole nother world.
Which is important.
But it's, yeah, but it's, it's, um, it's something, um, I think worth looking at.
You didn't read my pizzle.
I, I did not, I did not read your pizzle.
I, I went halfway through. But, but I, I think, what, what I'm hearing about, about is the challenge, is this long-term obligation, how you, how you look at, um, what your anticipated cost to people who are either close to or exiting full-time.
And what is that, and what is that, and then what does the ARSC or that, or that, or that, um, bond payment become if we decide that part of that fifty million goes into trust or what? I mean, we, it, it, any, any number of ways. I'd, I'd, I'd love to put everything on the table and have so many different options, but it might be even more helpful if we just kinda laid out what our priorities are and, and kinda back into them. We need, we need as much resources available to meet the kind of, the fundamental needs of our, of our, of our, of our strategic plan, long-term strategic plan. How do we have resources? We're gonna find other ways to monetize everything we possibly can, at the very same time keeping our, our, our taxes low. Um, but, um, uh, but how do we make sure we're giving citizens the, the highest quality spirits they can possibly have in the city? Uh, but I, it's, it's, just what, what we're all dealing with now, I say we all mean cities all across, and states all across the country. The, the one good thing is that we are actually dealing with it here. A lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of places are, are completely, are completely ignoring it. Now, now they're, now, obviously, since, uh, ratings agencies and everybody else is, is, are really starting to look at this as, as, as an indicator of your, of your fiscal health, a lot of more folks are paying attention to it. But, um, it's, uh, I've always felt good we're ahead of the curve, but, but every dollar here is just that much more precious, just because, just because of our DNA, which makes us unique, um, compared to every other city we, we just mentioned, we're, we're different than all of them. And, uh, so, so you guys can hear the conversations we all have, uh, independent of, of you all in the room. Kind of where, where, what our, what our thinking is. And, and, and the good thing about it, and it gets even more healthy when Daniel's in the room, I think there's, there's a good, healthy, natural tension, and it all goes back to the same place, which needs some really good ideas to, to, to help us get from here to there.
Mr. Mayor, thank you and counsel for that healthy discussion. I know it will continue. If you think of something after today, keep emailing me and Pam and Jeff and Missy, and we will share that with Kevin and the team. And we look forward to bringing some real data, um, in July for you.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Our next item for city council discussion is the Clean Water 2020 update on economic impact, which I think is timely, and we wanted to, um, give Joey and his team with CDM Smith, Mr. Brian Cully, project manager, the opportunity to give you some impact, particularly as we're working through our budget discussions with water and sewer.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Please, careful with him. Let me get this filled in my parking garage as we, we get down. Take care. All right?
Yeah.
They brought the whole team?
Mm-hmm. Feel the power, I feel it. Should be able to come up with something that we can do, something that makes sense. The main thing about, is the bottom line. Come up with something that makes, makes sense.
Good job. Show us, and show us off.
Hey, man. You're a good shout.
Yeah. I agree with, I agree with this, and I give some opportunities.
Look at this picture.
Make that second part first of all.
See if you can figure out.
This is page number two.
It's too many, you got it from somebody.
Yeah. Until, until, until they're ready to use it.
Yeah. So, the seventy-five thou, this lays in a bay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's your day?
In a minute.
Oh, this one's it now? Are you? Okay, I was thinking that wasn't. Who's that? You heard that?
What number is that? Go ahead, okay.
Thank you, everybody, for letting us come today. Today, we wanna, today's presentation for the Clean Water Program is a little bit different than our normal presentation. Uh, normally, we're talking about how the Clean Water Program benefits our sewer system, benefits the environment. Today, we wanna talk about how the Clean Water 2020 program benefits the community, the economic benefit to the community. So, uh, Brian?
I, um...
Yes, sir.
I was wondering, that caught my attention. I wanna hear you.
Yeah, today's a little bit different than normal. We're not talking about SSOs today. We're talking about, uh, how, how spending money on our sewer system benefits our community. So, Brian Cully with CDM Smith and Eric McClellan, I hope I got that right, um, is here to, to talk about, um, the benefits to our system, and turn it over to Brian.
Appreciate it. As Joey, uh, said, this is not our normal presentation. Uh, first of all, I wanna make sure everybody understands, I've got good news. I hate everybody had to leave and step out there for a second, but we've got good news for today's presentation. I'm not here to talk to you about broken pipes, um, talk to you about, uh, you know, promise there's no photos of grease balls from the sewer system or anything like that, or talk about SSO numbers. We're actually here to talk about positive economic impact, and I thought this probably would draw a lot of attention, quite frankly, um, on the agenda. So, as far as what we're gonna talk about today, I do wanna introduce you to Eric McClellan, um, who is right here on the front row, um, who's with my firm, CDM Smith, and, uh, he's the economist. We'll, we'll tell you a little bit more about Eric here in a second. Uh, I wanna go through the study purpose of why we did this, and then really go through the understanding of what is it we looked at, what are the metrics, and most importantly, what are the resulting job implications of doing the Clean Water 2020 program, because it's very significant. So, first of all, I wanna make sure y'all understand that, that Brian Cully, engineer, did not do an, an economic analysis. This was prepared by Eric McClellan, professional economist here. Um, Eric is a, is one of the hidden gems of Columbia, in my opinion, quite frankly. Um, he's a game cock, always like to point that out. Um, he's a graduate of the MIBS program over at USC, and really works both locally, but also nationally and internationally, um, with our firm, and has been here for, for quite a while, and is based here in Columbia. So, we got to just walk the couple of city blocks to come down here for the presentation. Um, some of the projects Eric's done, just to give you an idea, one of the first one, uh, first report he did that I was curious and read was, the Federal Aviation Administration had him doing the impact of civil aviation on the U.S. economy. And, and during that study, September eleventh happened, and they asked him to go and look at what's the impact on the, the economy from civil aviation standpoint from nine-eleven and from the airports getting shut down and everything. So, just to give you an idea of the, the stature of the type projects Eric commonly does, um, a few years back, I remember he was doing, uh, for USAID, was looking at Afghanistan and where they need to put in provincial roads and the economic benefit of, of, of basically putting in that kind of infrastructure over in Afghanistan. Uh, but right now, he's actually working on a project with Central Midlands, looking freight, uh, freight and mobility and the economic impact of that. So, again, I was very fortunate to be able to get him to pencil us in and put us on his , uh, dance card, so. If you have any hard questions, I'm gonna hand those to Eric. If you got the easy ones, I'll, I'll field those, so. Um, study and, uh, the whole purpose of why we did this, um, was to really quantify the impacts of, of what we're doing from the wastewater side. So, we're going out in, in the city, and I say we, everybody in this room, we're, we're spending seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars to improve the wastewater system. That's a big deal. We're gonna make sure we're compliant and meet all the terms of the consent decree along the way. But when you go and you spend seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in a spot this size, you have a lot of economic impact. And we want to be able to go in and quantify that for you and be able to look at that and see. Um, also, let you know, too, as we talk through here, I'll refer to the city, or you'll see that in some of these slides, and when I refer to the city, it's not the city of Columbia proper limits, it's actually a combination of Lexington and Richland County. That, that's how we put them together, we could separate those two counties if you want to, but as we talk about impacts to the city, we're talking about Lexington and Richland County combined together, so. Um, and then also, to make sure you understand the analysis timeframe, we were looking at the implementation of spending the seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. We looked at that across the ten-year time span, and, and we're gonna look at that here in just a second. Um, but then you also have the ability to continue development some of these capacity-limited areas, which I'll be talking a lot about here in a little bit, um, and that really spans a twenty-five-year timeline, okay? All right. Economic impacts, let's look at this, 'cause it can be kinda confusing, um, as we go through here. We really think of the economic impacts in terms of the study as, as a Rubik's Cube, 'cause you have the activities that generate, um, basically the, the results, you've got the types of economic impacts, and then you have the measures. So, to talk through that briefly, if you don't mind for a second, we've got the implementation. So, right up here at the top, that's the one I just said was ten years, that's going out and spending the seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, okay? And so, for simplicity reasons, we look at that across just a ten-year timeframe, is it twelve, is it thirteen? Could be, we use ten, just to make it a little simpler. Um, so that's actually spending the seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. Then, some of the other activities you have is some of these constrained areas, which, again, we'll be talking about a lot here shortly, these constrained areas that could be or are cut off to further development that are opened back up, and what sort of economic activity happens there in terms of both construction and development, but also continued and ongoing economic activity from that construction and development. So, um, that's something we'll be...
What's the difference in the ten years and the twenty-five years?
The seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars is being spent approximately over a ten-year period, but the benefit of keeping these areas open to development goes well beyond that. It, we could've made it forty years, could've made it twenty years, we just picked twenty-five. Eric's probably got a better reason that he could say, well, twenty-five's pretty common.
Plus, you're not forgetting.
Exactly. Um, as far as the, the types of impacts, there's really three, and I wanna make sure we understand that. So, direct impacts, I think of that in simple terms as the guy that drives the backhoe, that's him getting his paycheck. That's the pipe foreman getting paid. That's the surveyor getting his paycheck to go home to his family. So, that's, that's direct, okay? Then we have indirect, so that's paying suppliers. A way I think of that is whenever a contractor pays for the stone he gets to lay pipe, that's them going and buying the stone from the Martin Marietta quarry down by the river. That's, that's paying your suppliers or buying pipe or buying concrete from one of the local plants. And then you have induced, okay? Induced, a good example of that is that, that pipe foreman that takes that check home to his family. Well, he may go down to the doctor's care down here on Main Street and get, get medical care, you know, if he's sick or something. Him respending that income is the induced, okay? That, uh, that guy that drives the backhoe, taking his family to the bowling alley, that's, that's the induced, that's the respending of the income. And you'll see these broken out here in a little bit, okay? And then you have measures, and we can measure this stuff six ways to Sunday. You can do gross regional product, you can do output, you can do tax revenues, um, if you want to, which is something I thought y'all might be interested, I see, uh, Ms. McDowell's head pop up. Um, the one we're gonna look at for terms, or at least for the purpose of today's presentation, is jobs. We've got more tables and charts in, in the study that we did than you can shake a stick at. I figured y'all would appreciate us just concentrating on jobs for the purposes of today, but if you wanna know more, let me know, we'll be happy to go into that. Okay, so let's talk about the implementation job impact. So, again, I said, we're spending seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, we're using the term over ten years, what does that do, okay? So, we go in and we use something called the M-Plan Model, okay? And that uses all the, you know, Bureau of Economic Statistics has this model and all the inputs are in there, and we're able to go in and say, based on the type of activity, so we took that seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars and said, we're spending this much this year on construction, this much on professional services. The next year, we did that same breakout, and we feed all that stuff into the model, and what it's able to do is basically be able to tell us the job impacts. It can do the other measures also, but again, we're just talking about jobs. So, to summarize, this is for the Columbia area, so we're talking about for Lexington and Richland County only, okay? You can see the direct, indirect, and induced jobs supported by spending the seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars related to the program. So, if you average that out, and again, this was done, um, with, with data from back in, actually before two thousand and fifteen, and so that's the reason you see it kinda flatline after five years, is 'cause our budget back then had a, a flatline at five years. We're getting better on nailing down that seven-fifty and everything, but this is what we had two years ago whenever we did this. What you see, the net summary, which y'all care about, is that the program, the implementation of it, is supporting approximately nine-hundred jobs per year on average. That's the takeaway, that's very significant. Yes, sir?
Question on that. Uh, your, your prediction of supporting nine-hundred...
Yes, sir.
Thousand jobs per year. Um, in your guesstimates, are you able to predict, or, yeah, to predict how many jobs, uh, the paychecks from those jobs actually turn over local, or they would be, um, workers that kinda, I would see, they would pass me an I-26 going back to Atlanta or, or Spottinburg, you understand what I mean?
Gotcha, that's a perfect...
Terms of real local impact.
A perfect question. We're going to look at that, actually, that's the reason I have this slide followed by the next one. So for example, when you see induced on here, so that's this section right here, that's induced. That means, and I knew it. So that light gray or light green, I'm colorblind, I apologize, that lighter color right there is induced jobs. So that's the income respending, somebody going to the bowling alley, going to a baseball game, going to the doctor's care. That's the induced jobs supported in that Columbia or Lexington and Richland County area right there. So that's the volume of jobs that you see being induced right here.
That's dollar that turns over?
Here.
In the local account.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And what you'll see on this next slide I'm about to go through, if you look here right now, and again, this is just Lexington and Richland County, we're at one thousand and seventy-six jobs. When I click to the next slide, it's going to be for the whole state. And what you see is that most of that stays in Lexington and Richland County, okay? So keep your eyes there on the one thousand and seventy-six. When we go here, that one thousand and seventy-six is the end of the darker block, and then you see the rest of the state accounted for up here. And I was actually kind of very surprised by how much stays very local in this area. Is it exactly that to the individual job? This is an approximate tool. But again, it's based on very detailed economic data, and Eric could explain that detail if you all want to go into that. But what you see here is that most of those jobs that are created are staying here. The number was eight hundred and eighty-three on an average year on the last slide. Here, it's nine hundred and fifty-four. So you see that most of this effort is staying, staying here at home, which I think is very important. Again, this is just induced. This is the spending of the seven hundred and fifty million dollars, okay? That seems like a lot. Just wait until we get to the last slide, it goes up quite a bit, okay? Now here, this is taking, this is going back to the one thousand and seventy-six jobs created in Columbia, for example, in the first year. And this actually splits it out for the Columbia area, actually be the eight hundred and eighty-three, because it's an average in Columbia. And this splits it out as to where those jobs created. You sit there and say, we're spending seven hundred and fifty million dollars, almost all that's construction. Not much of it goes to professional services, if you do a ninety, ten split. But where does that actually go? And what you see is the direct, look how much is being spent on construction. Massive amount. Down here, for example, healthcare, none of that seven hundred and fifty million is being spent on healthcare. But the induced jobs are being spent on healthcare. People are out there working in construction, spending money on healthcare. And you see, I'm going to break this all the way down. The only thing, the only hole I've been able to shoot in Eric's analysis is down here at the bottom, it says that there's only one job in the local two-county area supported by forestry, fishing, and hunting. I know how much a lot of the people I know well spend on fishing and hunting, and that may be slightly inaccurate. That's probably more like two or three, but we can argue that later. But what you really see is not just the construction and the engineering industries that are benefiting from the Clean Water Program. And I think that's huge to see that rippling through the rest of the area. And again, this is just Lexington and Richland County. It's not just the construction worker and the engineer and the surveyor that's benefiting. This hits the whole economy with that. And again, this is just the spending of the seven fifty, okay? All right, so let's talk now for a little bit about capacity-limited areas. I know we've had some new members of council join us, since we've had a lot of discussions about capacity-limited areas. So I'll try to give a brief summary. We probably need to deep dive later on that. But I think it's important to understand that the consent decree has terms and conditions in it that can cause the city to be in a capacity-limited condition from a wastewater standpoint, and would basically prevent continued connections or development. People that are on the system continue to be on the system, but if you wanted to put in a new McDonald's, Hundred Home subdivision, you would be prevented from doing that. So the consent decree has required Columbia to set up a capacity assurance program, which is complicated. It changes over time, the definitions of capacity are convoluted. I'm not going to go into that here. What's important is the city has to check every time somebody wants to go and make a significant connection to the system, they have to check and make sure there's room in the system. We don't want to put five pounds in a three-pound bag, right? That old analogy. So we have to go in and check and make sure that's okay. So the pipes have to be big enough. And in some cases, the pipes aren't big enough now. We've got projections to say the pipes might not be big enough in certain areas in the future. But in some areas, they're not big enough now, right? And that's something we've been working on. And one thing that I want to point out, and this is very important, because this really ties in with the last slide, is that City of Columbia leadership, all the ones that we've been talking to when we do CIP planning, all the direction that we've gotten, they have been very clear, be very proactive in addressing these capacity-limited areas, both the existing ones and the ones that are projected in the future. So if there is a known capacity-limited area either now or in the future, we've been directed to make sure plans are in place to be able to correct that problem. Most of the times, it's doing a design to increase the pipe size, followed by a construction project to actually increase the pipe size. So your staff has been very proactive in making sure that we're being aggressive with those. The EPA does not care if you're capacity-limited. If you have a major growth area of City of Columbia that cannot continue to grow because the pipe's not big enough, EPA does not care. They are fine with you being capacity-limited. That is not a concern of theirs when you read the consent decree, right? So if you don't spend any of that seven hundred and fifty million on capacity enhancements, they're fine with that, right? So that's a decision city leadership has to make of, no, no, we're going to make sure that we can have these areas, you know, open for growth and continued for growth as we go forward. And I think the really key there is that investing in the infrastructure capacity allows the parcels to continue to develop. And again, there's two types of development. There's the immediate construction of that neighborhood, and there's the economic activity that comes long-term with that neighborhood. So for example, building a veterinary office, you have the construction impact of building the vet office, then you have the economic activity over the next twenty-five years or whatever timeframe you want of that vet office working, or a dental office, or whatever you want it to be. So it's that continued activity that otherwise would go elsewhere, okay? So this is an example of several years ago, some of the constrained parcels we had. We had the high-growth area of Crane Creek, which actually, from the hydraulic model analysis that we did, where we looked at a lot of growth rates into the future. Crane Creek is by far your fastest-growing area at almost two percent, much more so than any other area. So that's a very big deal. That's the reason I want to point that one out. We also have the Lake Catherine area, and then down at the bottom, you have the Burnside area, which actually, the Burnside area has already been removed, and the Crane Creek limitation has been removed. The Lake Catherine area is in right-of-way property acquisition right now. So that restriction's still there.
Crane Creek's been removed, is it?
Yes, sir, as I understand, I think they've done that project to be able to remedy that, yes, sir. And those were the existing ones whenever we did this analysis. The model will look at future areas that will be going into capacity limitation in five years, ten years, twenty years, thirty years. As areas grow and pipes become more leaky, the pipes unfortunately don't grow over time. They're a fixed diameter, so as they become either leakier as they deteriorate, or you have growth, the pipe fills up and you'll eventually hit a capacity limitation area.
Back to that question.
Yes, sir.
Crane Creek is finished?
We've done, yeah, we've done the pipe project. So if you remember, a year, two years ago, we had a project to bypass the Crane Creek outfall to build a new pipe. That pipe is in service today. This year's CIP, we have two storage facilities that we're in design phase right now. So we have two storage facilities to build this coming year to address capacity in Crane Creek. Today, it is not a capacity-limited area today. But what could change that is if we have two consecutive SSOs on the outfall. So that's what we're building the capacity, storage capacity to address that. But as of today, we are...
Capacity is there now to take it to the...
Yes, sir. And that's where we, two years ago, what we referred to as the red map, it showed the capacity-limited area of Crane Creek. The Burnside, we actually, before we started negotiating the consent decree, we were in a capacity-limited area there. And we actually had to tell developers no in that area, previous to the consent decree.
And that's even after the flood, you were able to...
That's correct. Yeah, we finished up...
We had the setback.
If you remember, the Crane Creek project, we had a severe setback with the flood, because our bypass pump station was completely flooded and ruined.
Need a important note, too, that having the hydraulic model to get ahead of the future capacity limitations is going to be a big issue for the program. We start talking about the new development considerations and what all we looked at. If you look at it, your system serves approximately eighty-two thousand parcels that we looked at. Luckily, with the magic of GIS, we were able to slice through a lot of this stuff fairly quickly, but it was a pretty detailed analysis. You have fifteen thousand parcels within those capacity-limited areas that I showed you. And three thousand of them are undeveloped parcels in the capacity-limited areas that we looked at. You could have continued growth of the fifteen thousand. So for example, a house could become a multi, you know, family, you know, dwelling or something. We didn't focus too much on continued densification, because that's a little bit more of a crystal ball. We wanted to be more exact, and we really focused on those three thousand undeveloped parcels in the capacity-limited areas and looked at how could they grow over time if they were allowed to, okay? And to do that, we looked at a lot of stuff, we looked at current zoning, current use, really sliced through a lot of the planning documents that were available. And again, being able to use these growth rates from the hydraulic model really allowed us to get a lot of bang for benefit. So we were able to get two bangs out of one buck, essentially, lack of a better term. So that was pretty important, the detailed analysis. So for an example, again, to zero in on Crane Creek, this is looking at household development that could happen in Crane Creek and the density associated with that. But again, if we didn't fix the capacity problem, none of this could happen. So you wouldn't have that immediate construction of neighborhoods, nor the long-term economic benefit of the neighborhood being there, okay? So that's just an example. These are just some examples. This is business activity, again, in the Crane Creek area. So we looked at what are the parcels where you could have this type of growth? We also looked at the growth rate. We didn't just go in and say, well, let's fill up all three thousand parcels. That would grossly overpredict the amount of benefits. So we looked at the appropriate growth rates and applied those into the area. And here's the really important slide. Remember that number we looked at before, like one thousand and sixty-four? That's this amount, so remember those implementations, jobs? The ones that averaged about nine hundred a year? They were from spending the seven hundred and fifty million? That's this darker color right down here at the bottom. See how it ends after ten years? When you stop spending your seven hundred and fifty million dollars, that money to the construction worker, the money to the engineer, goes away, that benefit stops, right? I'm not getting the City of Columbia dollar to then go re-spend it in the bowling alley. That stops after ten years. But that was a lot of jobs, that was almost a thousand jobs. What's amazing is when you look at your decision to continue to make sure areas don't go into capacity limitation, look at the benefit. And again, this is just from those couple of areas we looked at. Look at the benefits. So what you have here, this color bar is looking at the development activity. So in those areas, again, let's use Crane Creek, and let's use a dentist office as an example. Because that area is now open to development, you can now make new connections, and they're going to be over four thousand gallons, they can now build their office. So that's part of that activity, okay? Now this gray on top is that ongoing economic activity from that dentist office, that vet, that whatever it is, pizza shop, restaurant, you name it, that light industrial facility. The fact that they can exist and operate here, not so much the jobs, you end up seeing that having spent this money supports nine thousand jobs a year. And that's where your real benefit is, in terms of economic impact and supporting jobs in the community.
Am I correct? Crane Creek is completely out of the city limits of Columbia?
Most of it, I know is, but how much I don't know, let me hold on.
A substantial portion of it is outside the city limits of Columbia. So the investment that the City of Columbia is making into the capacity to serve Crane Creek is coming back to the benefit of Richland County for that dentist office, that housing development and all. And it would not be able to occur if the City of Columbia didn't have the foresight to increase the capacity in that area, that growth area of the Richland County.
Exactly. So if you decided not to open up that pipeline, then you would see future development in that area essentially with her, because it wouldn't be possible. But I do want to point out, too, that from a development and economic standpoint, yes. But I do want to point out, too, that by being able to open this up to more development, you get more customers, more people paying rates. And in the utility business, economy of scale is everything. Walmart and Amazon exist for a reason, and it applies to the water and sewer industry very much.
The water bill would be minimum to the dentist office, as you, as your explanation.
Mm-hmm. Be like a normal customer, yes, sir.
Not recreational facilities. But I think, too, Howard, one, I think, could be short-term, depending on where the real development is, is how contiguous you are for annexation.
Well, I think we all just recognize it is the expansion of the utility system that enables us to grow in Richland County.
Well, and not just that, the Columbia, the city, as you talked about here, is the benefit of its definition is Richland, yeah, Richland and Lexington County. And so the economic impact is not just directly impacting and benefiting the city, it's impacting the region. So I think that also needs to be repeated, because people always talk about the rates that out-of-city people pay, but the entire region's getting the benefit from this project and this investment.
And the foresight of our system to be able to move and expand in the way that we do.
To be looking at twenty forty.
Right.
And knowing that you've got to get a bigger line out there, because you're going to have a dentist office.
So this goes directly to your visioning that you all have done with looking at Columbia by twenty thirty-six. I really appreciate it, by CDM and our staff, for trying to connect those dots to show for the decisions you're making now as part of the work plan and the bigger vision. That's the results you will see.
I'll say, too, when we do talk about spending the money, and as we're wrapping up the condition assessment and, you know, continuing our planning, in terms of the consent decree, the only optional money there is to spend is the capacity. You can choose to invest that money or not. The rehab, you kind of have to do that. You don't have any options there. But I think what you'll see is that by investing in projects that prevent capacity-limited areas, you have pretty big payback there long-term for the... Eric, anything that I forgot? Or is that...
Just one thing at the bottom, percent of the regional share, right now.
Yeah, just down here, it's important to note that in two thousand and fifteen, the regional share of jobs in the areas is at point seven percent. But like I said, this is a high-growth area, particularly with Crane Creek. So you're seeing that by twenty forty, because it is higher growth, you end up being more at two point one percent. It's better to have that here than Charlotte, or Augusta, or Charleston, or somewhere else. Pretty important to note that, I think. Thanks, Eric. I forgot to mention that.
Very good presentation.
Thank y'all very much.
Very good.
Yeah, sure.
Peace.
And it was linked to you all's agendas, but we'll get y'all some copies as well.
Just along with each other for more charts and numbers and shape of stick.
That's very interesting.
You told about the number.
I'd like to see that on Bull Street.
And the nine thousand dollars, nine thousand jobs. Yes, that's important, again, I think, to me, that's important, too.
Mayor, pose him, I think you all want to entertain a motion. Ask the mayor.
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session for receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege, Adams and Reese, billboards, penny project, utility relocation.
Pending appeals. Pending appeal.
Pending appeal, that, okay, I had to think of it. Proceed of legal advice pending to a pending threat or potential claim pursuant to thirty dash forty S seventy-eight two, Pelsa versus City, Meeks versus City, and legal advice, negotiations, discussion of negotiations, instant proposed contractual arrangements pursuant to A two Lower Richmond Sewer Extension Agreement, Gills Creek Agreement, Fire Services Agreement, Marathon, Bull Street Venue License Agreement, Capital City Ballpark site. Discussion of negotiations, instant proposed purchase of property pursuant to A two Columbia College Drive, Main Street property. Discussions of employment of an employee pursuant to A two City Attorney.
I'll second, but one thing on that, I know a couple of these, Captain Rickman added, and he called me, and he asked, could he vote electronically? And I told him, yes. I don't know if he knows that he can't participate in executive session. He did, okay. So some of those may come off, because we need him here for those, unless, yes, we're able to, as many.
At the appropriate time, then, would you so indicate what those items are?
Yes.
All right, the second.
Second.
All right. Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, here.
Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin.
Hi.
Thank you.
We do.